Right. I'd like to call this meeting to order. I'd like to have a motion to convene into executive session. You have to read everything. I'd like to make a motion to convene into executive session to approve executive session minutes for March 4, 2025, potential litigation with the vendor pursuant to Rhode Island general law 4246-582, collective bargaining pursuit to Rhode Island general law 4246-582, contract with school secretaries, NEARI, teaching negotiations pursuant to Rhode Island general laws 4246-582, collective bargaining. That's when someone says so moved.
So moved.
We both did.
Do you have a... All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We should be over there.
Are they all there?
We ready, Chris? I'd like to call this meeting to order. The first thing I'd like to do is pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start, I would just make sure.
Yeah, our emergency exits are in the back and to the side if needed.
I'd like to take a moment just to honor someone that we lost. It's a community member that we lost, June Gugliami, who was a teacher for 30 some odd years, was a school committee member for 25 years, and she will be greatly missed. But many people will have stories to tell about her so she can live on. So if we could just have a moment of silence in honor and respect of her, we'll just do that now. Thank you.
I would just like to state that during executive sessions, we had two votes. The first one, the vote on the minutes, there were three votes and one recusal just because of they were not in attendance. And it was unanimous for a closing of the executive sessions.
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda? You have to read it.
Make a motion to close executive session.
Nope.
Which one then?
Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda to approve the regular session minutes March 4th, 2025? To approve the general fund bills of $343,120.34, the grant fund bills of $116,246.71, Northwest Special Education for $266.23, and school for school food service funds for $34,432.81.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next on the agenda is public comment. And I would like to read my purpose for public comment. Public comment is not a time for a dialogue, but it is a meeting of the public school committee, and it is not a meeting of the public. It is a meeting of the school committee that is held in public. The purpose of the public comment period is for this committee to receive input from its community. Public comment is an important function, and it is critical for us to listen to the community and to consider what we hear when making our decisions. In general, it is not a time to receive direct responses from the school committee. However, we may provide brief factual clarification if necessary. Otherwise, the public comment section is for you to voice your concerns without engaging in debate with the school committee members. It is important for you to know that while you may not be getting answers to your questions or concerns during public comment period, that does not mean you will not be given answers. There are other opportunities for you to get your answers. For example, you can call or email any school committee member. You can now, and you can now reach out to your school parent pact, PACT representative. This process is designed to allow consistency and fairness and to allow everyone a chance to be heard without unduly disrupting the meeting flow and allowing the school committee to complete its business in a timely fashion. As a result, in order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak and an opportunity for us to hear your concerns, I will allow each person to come to the mic once during public comment. If you find that you have additional comments after your turn is over, then please address them at a later time by reaching out to a school committee member or the superintendent. Having said that, we appreciate you coming to this meeting, and we'll thank you, thank you in advance for your expressing your thoughts with us. So is there anyone here in the audience that would like to come for public comment? I will take the people here first before anyone at home. I can't see people behind the screen. Since I don't see anybody here for public comment, I don't see anybody at home for public comment. We will move on. Next, we have the state assessment data presentation by our, no other than our director of curriculum. Is this going to be behind us? Hello?
So this was in, on our agenda two months ago. It was taken out, and then last month, unfortunately, I was sick. So this is so old news, sorry, everyone. But this, these are the assessment results for last year. We are in the middle of testing this year, so a lot of the actions have already happened. Chris, scroll, please. This is what you see as a first page of our school district report card, the number of schools, employees, educators, and an overall proficiency in ELA, math, and science, and our graduation rate. So this is all grades combined, including RICAS, PSAT, SAT, and all of the NGSA assessments. Go ahead. Our star ratings are, can you scroll down just a little bit? No, I mean, I meant up, sorry. Oh, there we go. Our accountability measures and how our star rating is determined is by, are by these five components. Diploma plus and graduation rates are only for the high school. And what goes into school quality and student success are listed there. Achievement and growth are just math and ELA and science proficiency, and commissioner's seal and post-secondary success. Commissioner's seal is the number of students exceeding both math and ELA. And post-secondary success is the number of students taking high-level courses, including CTE, AP, and early enrollment classes. I say these because next page has our star ratings. Whether we like it or not, RICAS actually scores us based on our lowest star in each of those categories. So I'm very, very proud to say that out of our five schools, three of our schools went up a star rating last year, which is only another two districts in the state that did that. So kudos to all the teachers, students, and families for supporting our kids. Clayville, from a five-star went to a four-star, but I do want to say that Clayville such, has such a small population that one or two students not taking the test actually hurt us this way. I just want to say I'm very proud of my hope, people, because we went up a star, and that is amazing, amazing job. Our Cituat Middle School did not go up a star. However, their growth in closing achievement gaps for students with disability was amazing, and they're no longer identified as schools in need of improvement and additional support. Our high school, if you can see the diploma plus measure, we got five stars. For our school quality, we got five stars. Graduation rate was amazing. The four stars that we received was because of our achievement in math and ELA. And of course, our five-star school, North Cituat, they did amazing, and we're very, very proud of their accomplishments. Any questions on this? Because star ratings are just like a hotel rating. And unfortunately, the way that they have kind of started rating our schools does drive our house values and all of that. So it does have a lot of implications in a community, but that's how they are calculated. So right now, our English language proficiency is not applicable because our number of students is below 20. And if it gets above 20, that becomes a measure that they would consider as well. Yes?
So I know that we had a presentation from Brad Wilson about our special education program and how the state is changing. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna articulate this well. More of our special ed students are taking, are these star ratings based on the RICAS scores?
They are based on RICAS for all the way in the, the end of middle school and high school is based on PSAT, SATs.
So as far as the RICAS scores are, more and more of our special ed students are taking the RICAS scores.
Yes.
And as opposed to being exempt, that might not be the right word. And I can only wonder how that's affecting these outcomes.
The amazing thing is that we, we have to believe that all students can learn. So by highlighting the discrepancies and the achievement gaps, we have tried to change our practices for special education. And middle school is our first one that we changed in the secondary, that teachers are actually no longer co-teaching nine, 15 minutes, an hour from bell to bell. They are just on a needs basis and it has shown that the students are actually growing much faster. So we're excited and hopefully middle school, high school next year, we're gonna kind of replicate the same model. But we are quarterly going through data and digging deep to see if there is a subpopulation that we're not serving well and what can we do better to make sure that there is no achievement gaps? Next, please. All right. The following slides are very, very data-driven, but I really wanted to just kind of show you on a horizontal way. Grade three, 48% of our students were proficient, meeting or exceeding in 17, 18. And if you go across, those are the scores of third graders and so forth. But then if you look diagonally, that's the same students growth or lack thereof. Just that's the same cohort going year to year and how they have been impacted. I put the arrows on the ones that went up this year from last year. Because if I look at it as a grade three from 17, 18 all the way to 23, 24, we can talk about curriculum adjustments to instruction. But then really looking at cohorts, we can see whether we are making changes to the kids. Any questions on these? I'm not gonna go through all of them, but I would love to hear questions. This next slides are gonna be just for math and the packet is available online. I don't want to waste a lot of time, but if you have questions, I'm right here. Scroll, please. This is math and there are three arrows, so we went up in three of the grade levels. In math, a lot of our scores are above what we were pre-COVID, which was the goal of the state in all of their fundings and SR, all of those. So we have a lot to celebrate. There's a lot to go, but small steps and we met a lot of our goals that we have, we had set. Next, please. This is the one that I'm really, really excited to share with you because we actually don't have a curriculum for science in elementary that is high quality curriculum and the state has not provided it. So we did a lot of different things in all of our grade levels that are getting tested. And if you see, our scores have extremely gone up, especially big kudos to grade eight, which is, I think, the third. Next slide tells us, I think they're fourth in the state. These are again the same by school. I'm not gonna go through them. Chris, you can go. ELA, math. There we go. This is kind of an interesting one. I compared us to the top three districts in the state and ranked us out of the 30 public LEAs. There was a time when I started, they said we wanted to be top 10. We have some areas that we are already in top 10. But even if we're not, in some of them, it's within 3%. So I just wanted to show that the distance is not so much and it's so much achievable. If we have one student do a little bit better, we could do the top 10 easily. All right, this was ELA. And historically, we do compare ourselves to neighboring districts and Barrington just because they're, they have been number one. So we're the right, is that blue? Yes, blue. And that's yes, thank you. This is for math and our rankings, the same way, the top three districts. With comparable districts. Science is, we had a lot of improvements, so that's another good one. Great, five were six in the state and grade eight. Okay. Grade eight, I feel different, the sound voice is different, is fourth in the state. Okay. Comparable districts. Just go up one more time, please. Sorry. I just wanted to show that although this, it is different, right? Okay. Although, is that okay now? I don't want to be screaming. Although the bar graphs are very different and significant, it looks like a significant difference. But if you look at it, it actually, the difference is between 10 points. So 40 to 40, 53, it's not a big gap. Okay, that's it. I am, can you scroll down? So what we did, and you don't have to read this, but I, what I wanted to highlight tonight is the work that every grade level in the school department did and also our departments in the secondary. We had data workshops where we, I presented the beginning parts of this presentation. Teachers reflected on their own data as a grade level or as a department. We said, what were the glows? So the positives and the strengths that we saw. What are the areas of growth? So we call them glows and grows. And what is our, our three action steps? So I do have to say that a lot of the, a lot of work has gone into preparing and learning from our data last year. So within the three action steps, we decided to change the scope and sequence sometimes to make sure that we are teaching subjects that are being tested before the actual assessment. That was one of the big ones that in almost all grade levels, especially in math geometry, we brought it a little bit earlier. We looked at what questions we didn't do well on and we designed formative assessments. I want to highlight the work I did with fourth grade across the district. We met out of off school grounds and they truly, truly did an amazing teamwork of creating spiral review questions. So questions that actually go through the topics that have been taught from the very beginning of the year and assigned it to their kids and measured the achievements on that. And a lot of work has gone into incentivizing RICAS and doing well on all of the state assessments. From free prom tickets to the top scorers, to hot breakfast, to tickets and dance parties. I have to say that a lot of planning has gone too into preparing our kids by teachers, by administrators. So I want to thank all of them and hopefully we'll see amazing results. Well, the, the next five slides are each of the schools' grows and glows for your reference. I'm open to any questions.
I don't have a question, more of a comment of the level of detail in this and the, as you say, digging down and even to the point of, you know, question to question on the RICAS score and meeting with the different grade levels is work that this school has never seen before having you come. And it's, it's exciting to see this. It's really tells a huge, look at the story in front of us. I honestly read halfway through this and I got overwhelmed. I, I can't fit it in my brain. It's so much work that goes into this. It's, I, I don't know how long a ticket it is.
I have to say it's a very much collaborative effort, so I, I don't want to take credit. Beginnings, yes, but this part, the last five parts, which is the actual part of the thing is by teachers or administrators. So I really want to say that we work collaboratively. Our interventionists have helped. I hope that we see results, but if we don't, we know we tried our best and we can keep going from there.
If I could, any teacher in the room, I'd love you to stand up. Any teachers in the room? I want to, I want to applaud you and thank you for all the hard work. Thank you so much. I see Rebecca as well, so administrators, thank you. I see Lori back there. This is, this is great work.
Thank you very much. Am I done?
And Ozzy, if you would make sure you share that. Congratulations and thank you to all of them that you worked with.
I, I sure will. Thank you very much.
Does anyone have any questions for our curriculum director? I see Mr. Kozmowitz coming up. Obviously, state your name, please, and address.
Thank you, George Kozmowitz, Isa Copkins Road. Looking at the data, I see a significant drop-off in meeting standards in math in 10th grade. Why? What happens?
That, that was amazing and, you know, it caused us to really think about what is our curriculum? And is it because, why are our kids not growing as fast as we would want them to do? Number one, the first time they are tested is in grade eight. Grade nine, there is no state assessments. Grade 10 had a first time version of NSAT, PSAT last year that they are actually from RICAS recommending that we don't look at our data because the platform was different and it was adaptive. So if a student did not perform well, the questions didn't progressively get harder, so their scores were low. But that does not, I'm not justifying why we're not better. That's why we have, as the math departments, both at the middle and high school, decided to research other curriculum areas. This actually led us to compare our scores and our curriculum with the high, high performing districts. We visited different districts to see their curriculums in action. Right now, high school is leaning towards changing their math curriculum because we don't think that is meeting the kids' needs. I hope that answers.
Okay, I, I, I guess all I can say is thank you for that. I, I will leave you with pointing out that three quarters of your 10th grade students are not meeting standards. Three quarters. And I, I don't think, you know, you can stand up and clap and, you know, thank everyone for the work that they're doing, but it's not achieving results.
Any other public comment? Chris, I can't see if anyone's at home. Thank you. Having said that, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening. I want to start by thanking Ozzy for that report. She's working very closely with the building-based administrators and the teachers to continue to look at our data and develop plans so that students progress at the rate that we, we want them to and, and we know that they can. So thanks for the great work, Ozzy. I know that the budget's on the school committee's agenda this evening, but I'd like to take this time to thank Stephanie, the principals, the parents, and all of the committee members for all your hard work on this budget. We faced some challenges in supporting our students and staff while keeping our requests of the taxpayers at a reasonable level. Your support of our continued work and board improvement and growth is appreciated and it's recognized. We have managed to get this budget down to a 2.5% increase, knowing that there are some areas of concern and risk embedded in that number. Our efforts to improve communication with parents continues with our third pact meeting. I want to again thank Ozzy. She came to the last pact meeting and principals attended and we had a lively conversation about RICAS testing and assessment. We shared information about that assessment, how we prepare students, and the ways that schools support and celebrate our, our students during the process. It was a really lively conversation. I want to thank the parents who suggested that we develop a video with the curriculum director, just like the video that we did with Stephanie around district finance. We have begun to have conversations with our PR company to get that video going around curriculum and assessment. That feedback and suggestion is, is very much appreciated. It makes me, and school committee will probably laugh about this, but it certainly makes me consider my monthly newsletters and whether or not, in fact, a video might be a better mechanism for communication with parents based on the feedback that we got that night. I am hoping that the climate and culture survey that will go out will provide us with some additional direction on the preferred methods of communication. You have enrollment numbers in your packet this evening. As I say every year at this time, these numbers are fluid, particularly when we're talking about preschool and kindergarten numbers. The online registration portal is up and running. As with all new initiatives, we may have to make some adjustments. We met again this morning to have a discussion about that portal and using that technology to register students. I want to thank Mark DeLucchio, Patty, and the elementary principals and our technology team for all your hard work on this project. It should make it much easier for families to register their children, knowing that there may be some bumps initially. And that concludes my report for this evening. I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions from the school committee? That brings us to the budget to act.
So we're basically gonna talk about Medicaid because that's really the only change from last month, material change, I should say. We did budget this year for $101,931 in Medicaid and it's looking, as I'm tracking it now, that it's going to be closer to $84,000. Medicaid is a little unpredictable. I just want to talk about some of the ways that we get that money, just so there's a better understanding. It depends on how many Medicaid eligible students we have. When the service providers enter their logs, that doesn't mean we don't get it. It could just mean that it's going to be receivable at the end of the year when we near the end. Because our, the company that does our Medicaid is Relay. So if they are backed up, we'll get that later. So that, again, when I'm closing the audit, makes things a little unpredictable. So to see, you know, what we could potentially be getting in. Parent consent, they do have to consent, tuitions, and PCA logs. So not all of our outplayed students are tuition Medicaid eligible. So for example, we could have 10 and two maybe eligible. So that is one of the high drivers of this that I'm noticing now. So I'm not expecting a ton of change. That's why I did bring it down to the trend that I saw at 84. Didn't put us in dire straits. We did get RTIA defined benefit back in. My indirect cost for being the fiscal agent went back in, so it kind of balanced out. We're right where we thought we'd be, not a lot of change. But you can see, because we are on the essentials only timeframe right now, we're pretty level with the purchasing. So again, not a lot has changed, but I did just want to give that briefing about Medicaid, especially since we are talking about budget and it is a difficult thing to nail down sometimes.
You mentioned parent consent. How often is that an issue and why do you think that's happening?
So I did reach out to Melissa and she said that right now we have five consents missing and they work on that with a case manager. So it's kind of, they consent or they don't.
So the students are eligible, but there's no parent consent, so we don't get the reimbursement?
That's going to be bad. Oh, good, Brad, you're here.
Yeah, so every.
See, just introduce yourself for the people at home.
Brad Wilson, Director of Special Ed with the Northwest. So at all the meetings, we ask the parents for their consent to sign Medicaid. Frequently it happens and sometimes it doesn't. Sometimes there was like legal cases in the parents' background where there might be a trust and how that money's spent and they're just very unsure. The laws are different to state to state, so sometimes they're getting bad advice from advocates as well, who represent students in different states. So Rhode Island has a pretty good law that says it won't affect your private insurance. That's not the same in all states. So sometimes when they're getting these advocates from out of states, they're hearing misinformation. But they have a student with special needs. There's a lot, you know, on the line for them and I get it. We try to educate them, but at the end of the day, we can't force them to sign it. And they're just very worried that it would have effect on what they can get at home too.
That's such a sad situation for parents that already have a lot going on.
It is. And it's us, you know, we try to build trust and that's, you know, what we, what we try to do. And, you know, we try to give them the information. But at the end of the day, I'm, I'm not going to put a ton of pressure on parents because it's their choice.
Thank you for that. When we get Medicaid reimbursement, does it come to the school? Does it go to the town?
Everything goes to the town. Everything goes to the town.
And goes to the town and then they reimburse us?
And then we reflect it in our system. And so it never really comes to us. All our money funnels through the town, but we reflect it in our FMIS system.
Okay. Now we're on to new business. Um do I have a motion um to accept the field trip to Cooperstown for the Situate High School baseball team? Any discussion? All in favor? With the non-renewals of the teachers, is that a vote we need to take?
Yes, it it is a vote you need to take. Um this is the same process we go through um every single year. The only difference this year um on the list that you have, you'll see the Northwest Special Education um employees, because we will not be the fiscal agent after July 1, Pano will be the fiscal agent for Northwest. Excuse me. We have to non-renew all of those Northwest employees and then Pontagansett will need to hire them because the fiscal agent is the hiring agent because that's where the paycheck's throw flow through. So though that's the only difference um to the list that you have in front of you this evening from prior years. I recommend approval.
Do I have a motion to approve the non-renewal of a teacher's list?
Motion to approve the um non-renewal of teachers' lists presented.
Any discussion? And then it's my understanding that once we're done with the financial town meeting, um most people will know, because we have to find out what we're getting from the town and what they approve, then most of the people will know. Um be, they'll get recalled.
That that list will come back to you for um recall uh once we have all the financials in place.
Okay.
And then Northwest employees will be hopefully recalled by Pontagansett?
Will be hired by Pontagansett, correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um we had in our packet, the Northwest Special Education Collaborative Agreement. I'll see if anyone has a comment or question on that before I take it to a vote. Any questions on that agreement? From the school committee? In light of um Pontagansett becoming the new fiscal agent, I think it would be a good idea if uh we had a meeting between the um the board, which are all the superintendents. Um I'd like to be in attendance with that as well, just to make sure there's a smooth transition with the the moving of the fiscal agent. Um I'd like to hear from the school committee if if they give me the approval to go to that meeting with Superintendent Andries and to to have this discussion, just to make sure there's a smooth transition, see if there's any questions or complications.
I'll second that.
Well, I'm just asking approval for that. Um but in addition to that, do I have um approval to the Northwest Rhode Island Special Education Collaborative Agreement? Do I have a motion to approve that?
I propose to approve the Northwest Rhode Island Special Ed Collaborative Agreement.
Second.
Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And um.
And Erica, for some reason that you are not available to go to the meeting, if you would just want to put in there, there's an alternative can go for you.
Sure.
The kinds of some school committee members there.
So that doesn't have to be a formal vote because it's more of a, because it's not on the agenda. I just wanted to see if there was a any objection to that approval.
Makes sense.
Um I'd like to hear more about the North Situate Fire Alarm Upgrade Change before I have a vote on this. Is there anyone here that can talk about that?
Good evening, late, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. John Anderson, your attorney. Excuse me. Um I'd ask that you pass that item. Our architect is in the process of reviewing some small change orders. We had put it on the agenda because we hoped that the architect would have been able to have finished sitting down with the contractor and uh ironed out any disagreements and have a final package for North Situate to present to you. Uh that did not happen, so I would ask that you pass. What I can report to you, though, on the project is that the contractor is committed to finishing the North Situate Fire Alarm Prox uh project over the spring break.
How much is a change order for?
I believe the figure is a is it's actually seven or eight and I believe that they total, and I'm working from memory, perhaps 20,000.
So.
And the issue for each one of them is what's the justification? And some, they have identified the justification. Others, however, they are still determining whether or not they agree with the contractor about um whether the change order is appropriate. A lot of it stems from the problem and we have the same problem here at the high school is that we do not have accurate plans, construction plans for when the buildings were first constructed. So they start, you know, taking apart something in a wall and then they find something else when they take it apart. Kind of like your old house.
So did I hear you correctly that you recommend that we do pass this?
No, I'm recommending that you table.
Table it, because I was gonna say I would I would need to see the numbers. Okay.
It's not, I I'm not a construction expert. Um but uh when the uh change orders come to you, um it will come in the form of a chart with each change order, the dollar amount and the reason why. And somebody better than myself, perhaps either Mr. Martin or Mr. Robinson, the architect, um should be here to exact, you know, to be able to say change order number three. This is exactly why, you know, we uh, you know, found this when we went to put the fire alarm in in the kitchen or whatever.
Thank you. So um I make a motion to table this until we get more information.
Thank you.
John, can I just ask you a quick question uh to? First of all, it, this is the same contractor, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And can he still proceed in working in April if we haven't signed anything or agreed upon it?
They've they've, they have committed to work during April.
Okay, good.
They have, they have committed there. Uh the superintendent um had a um very positive uh conversation. I say positive in that they made the commitment to work. Um the superintendent took her stick to them um at at that meeting. I was not on the call because the lawyer for the company was not on the call. I didn't need to be on the call because the superintendent got what we wanted and that is to finish this project. With regard to the other project at the high school, there is no way that that could be finished over the vac, over the vacation. In addition to this, uh that North Situate is not used during the uh spring break, whereas the high school is.
Yes.
So um uh that contractor is um supposed to finish the North Situate project um this uh summer.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is approval of the fiscal year 2026 budget um for presentation for the town. Um I'd like to make a motion to approve the um budget to increase appropriations for 2.54%, as was presented at our last budget um workshop.
Second.
Is there any discussion from the school committee first? Is there any comment from the community or questions from the community?
Stephanie Mickelson, 150 Cleaner Chapel Road. I'm just checking on the status. You had talked about the status of the second grade. Are we going to talk about that tonight?
Um I do not believe we were going to talk about the status of the second grade because we're still waiting on um numbers coming in and we also want to wait and see what happens at the financial town meeting because we don't know what the town's going to approve.
Okay, it was my understanding last week you said you were going to talk about it tonight, so I was just checking.
Um I'm not prepared to talk about it because we don't really know what the town is going to approve.
Okay, thank you.
But um, you know, it's on everybody's radar.
Thank you.
Um all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the first reading of policy 8010 Situate School Department Student Attendance Policy? Any discussion on that? We hope that um this policy, you know, we'll we'll put it into practice. This is just the first reading. If people haven't had a chance to really take a good look at it, please read it because this is a a second run at this policy. Um we had some comments and um concerns from the community, so we went back and we rewrote this policy. Um we really appreciate the feedback from the community. Um it's just a first reading. We will do a second reading in a month from now. Um so please, if people in the community haven't had a chance to look at it, if parents haven't had a chance to look at it, please give it um a good read because we have another opportunity for a comment. Um having said that, all in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy 1030, which is Situate School Committee Powers and Duties?
Second.
Do I have any um comment on that, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy 2020 Superintendent Power and Duties?
So moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy 2025 School Principals Powers and Duties?
So moved.
And it's in second, do I have a second?
Second.
Um any discussion? Motion, uh all in favor?
Aye.
And I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy 4010 Situate School Department Parent and Family Engagement. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the second reading of policy 8055 Situate School Department Director Information and Student Records?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? I saw movement. All in favor?
Aye.
Um I wanted to talk about the Norse Smithfield School Committee Resolution. I had asked um Stephanie if if you even had time with all the budget work and if you didn't, that's fine. But um I was wondering how those numbers correlated to Situate if we were to plug that in.
I made a little spreadsheet, but I didn't have time to get up, so I was just gonna pass it to you. Um.
Let me, let me pull up the um resolution. So you said you you did run the information, it's there? So hold on one second, let me pull up. Thank you, Chris. So these resolutions are being submitted by many uh towns around the state constantly. Um and as you can see, they have to do with transportation. And there's pretty much a boilerplate for this um from what I've been seeing from all the other towns.
Madam Chair, we received this one uh today from Portsmouth.
Um it, it's pretty much the same language. Um and I was wondering if if you had the numbers to plug into that, just to help us with this. So if we start off where um the third whereas Rhode Island approves significant subsidies for private schools, some charging tuitions exceeding four, that's not the whereas. Um the where the four, one, two, three, fourth, the town of, it would say Situate, has spent how much on private school transportation?
So I have the amounts on it, um a label given to us by statewide, but I'm not sure they fit perfectly with what this particular resolution says. Um they're looking at 24, 25, right? So for private school, for example, we have 51,188.
How much is that?
51,188.
Okay. Um.
Thank you. Then um they talk about McKinney-Vento next.
Which one?
McKinney-Vento, it looks like that's the next one. Uh that would be 11,716 for us. Career and Technical is 132,000, 132, 80,000. And they talk about ESSA. That would be 96,117 for us. And.
96.
Yep, 96,117. Last one.
So my question to the committee is, um would we like to send forth our own resolution to the Capitol so they could see that we support this initiative? Any comments? I for one think it's a good idea to send a resolution. It sends a voice of how we feel. Um they often say that resolutions don't have teeth, but actually if everyone is sending a resolution um from all across the state, it gets more attention from Capitol.
Yeah, I have a question. How many districts, how many, so you said Portsmouth, it's the Smithfield, is there any more?
Oh, there's many, many more.
Didn't get a copy, but I know that.
There's many.
W G has done one, so yeah, there, yeah, there are multiple.
Okay, that makes sense, I agree.
I've been getting them with my, and you should be getting the emails as well from Rhode Island Association of School Committees. Um because I know everyone went to the training and is on the email list, but that's where I'm getting them through. Um so I I think we're I think it'd be great if we also wrote up a resolution. So would you, does this work where you write up the resolution and just present it at the next school committee meeting? Or just go ahead and send the resolution with these numbers plugged in?
If you, if you make a motion and a second for us to draft the resolution based on the um.
Language?
Yep, the language, we'll insert the numbers. Um and then you can um as part of that, um you can uh direct the superintendent to send it out uh on completion.
Um for our attorney, Mr. Anderson, does a language in this agenda allow us to do that? To give, uh right now it says discussion, action, vote, Norse Smithfield School Committee Resolution. Does that language allow us to make a vote to ask the superintendent to go ahead and write up a resolution and? So I make a motion to um give the superintendent the authority to write up the resolutions using the language from Norse Smithfield um and and send that to the state.
A second.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um the next is a discussion about relocating a central office. Um I don't know if the superintendent wants to talk a little bit about that.
Well, um we have been invited to uh move back to the town hall. Um we have looked at the space. It is adequate for um what our office space, space requires. Um I have met with Lori uh to talk about the space that we currently occupy at Clayville. Um Clayville certainly has a need for that space for services and support for students. So I think that it would be um a good idea for us to go back to the town hall since we've been graciously invited um and the space has been renovated. Um everybody in the office uh area has gone and looked at the space so that um we can ensure that everybody is in agreement. The only concern I may have is around parking, like um but we we will. But we will work well that out. It will be less of a commute for us to pay bills and for Stephanie to work with the Finance Department through the town, so that's a plus. So I would recommend approval in the relocation and, like, Clayville has its educational space back for kids and teachers, and we would move down to the town hall.
Do you have a timeframe? If approved?
It would have to be in the summer. Yeah, it would definitely have to be in the summer. And there may be a point in time while we're in transition where some of us are working from home. We certainly will be available and be working, but moving all of that stuff out downtown, I call it downtown. It is Situate's downtown, and it's lovely. Right. Will take a little bit of doing. We will utilize, I believe, we'll utilize our maintenance and custodial staff, so it'll be during the summer.
Any other questions? So I... Do I have a motion to approve the relocation of central office to Town Hall?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Are there any announcements from the school committee? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.